Brian Carr.
Here.
Virgil Lawrence.
Here.
John Serentopoulos.
Here.
Matthew Windar.
Absent with notification.
Michael Huco.
Here.
Keith Thurlo.
Present. Okay, so, Mr. Slater is going to give us a class and it will go towards our time for the states requiring of us.
What is this thing for? No.
Yeah, well, it's a presentation, so you can follow along his presentation.
Yeah.
If you want to go turn around.
No, it's all right.
Ready to go?
Yes, sir.
All right. Hi, folks. Good seeing you again. We do these training sessions, actually, my colleagues, Rich Roberts, Mark Branson, I worked with the Land Use Academy. We've been doing training for the Land Use Academy out of Yukon Extension for a long time. And when they did the mandatory training, we teamed up with them and worked with OPM in coming up with the curriculum that all the land use commissions in Connecticut could, would rely on for the purposes of the training sessions. So, we've recorded those for the Land Use Academy, but because we've done that, I also can offer to do the training for your commission directly, and you can get, you can get that credit, which I'll do tonight. There's a fair amount of material, but just, it's a summary of what powers you have as a zoning commission, what powers you have as a planning commission, and then aspects of, you know, your individual responsibilities as well as how to run an effective meeting. So, that pretty much will cover it, and I'd hope to be able to finish it in time for a few questions. But, by all means, if I get to something, you know, we're a small group here, interrupt me and I can, you know, I can clarify or address your questions. Not going to provide specific legal advice in the context of the training session, although we are, you're turning, obviously. So, with that one, we can hit the first substantive slide, which is the next one. All right, so, as a zoning commission, what your authority is, is to establish the regulations themselves. Towns are not required to have zoning. There's only a couple that don't. Once you have regulations, you can hear applications to either change the districts or change the regulations themselves. You also can provide the manner in which the regulations are enforced, and whether or not, whether a structure use conforms to the regulations. And some of that also is done by the zoning enforcement officer, which you can delegate. Next slide. All right, so, a legally non-conforming use, when zoning was established, the statute that created it, 8-2, had in it that nothing should prevent an existing use from being continued, and it can continue forever. And so, you, it can be regulated in some instances, but it cannot be prohibited or caused to what they call amortize, which would be to, you know, have it go down to zero. The goal is for everything to be conforming over time. But if you have a use that existed before the regs were adopted, or the regs were amended, or a building that doesn't comply, you don't have to bring it into compliance. It's illegal. Some people get, you know, hear "non-conforming" makes it sound like it's not legal. It's just the opposite, if it's legally non-conforming. If it wasn't in compliance and not non-conforming, it would be illegal, and it would be subject to enforcement. Now, if you have a non-conforming use, you can't expand it, but you can intensify it. So, you know, an example-
Wait, can you explain that?
Sure.
Intensify.
Yep, Deb, just about to. And so, a typical expansion, if you had a building where you had a commercial business, you had a retail sales business, and the zoning came in and it ended up in a residential zone, you, your existing commercial space is permitted. What you can't do is create more space. You can't add onto the building and make it a building, bigger building. That would be an expansion. You couldn't change it into a completely different use from, you know, a retail sale to a restaurant. That would be a different kind of use. That would be an expansion. But an intensification would be, you do a better job at your business, and you get more customers coming to your business, or you modernize your business. That's intensification. That's permitted. So, the nature of what, you know, a little gas station did in 1920 is very different than operating a gas station in 2024. So, people would, you know, you'd sell soda, you could sell, you know, do the typical things that you'd have associated with a, with that kind of a business. That's intensification. But you couldn't take, you know, a 10-pump station that existed in 1920 and then make it a 20-pump station. That would be an expansion. So, it's really, as long as it's the same use and the same footprint, you could do more of it. But what you can't do is increase the footprint, or change the use, except to a use that's conforming. Does that make sense? So, the types of zoning applications that you get, as I mentioned, you could have a regulation that would change the regs themselves or the zoning districts. And there's other, by statute, you could require that site plans be submitted. In some instances, like a typical single-family home, doesn't come before you. It just gets, when a building permit is requested, it gets submitted to the land use department who confirms that it's compliant with zoning. But more significant uses, you can require a site plan. And the site plan is an administrative review. The use is allowed by right. What you're doing is determining whether, you know, the heights are correct, setbacks are correct, all the specifics of the regulations in terms of access and egress, et cetera, are all satisfied. It's not a matter of if the use is allowed. A special permit, on the other hand, is a situation in which you are evaluating whether the use should be permitted. So, you can jump to the next hearing, the next slide to, I think, the special permit slide. So, with a special permit, unlike a site plan where your commission has an as-of, decided that a right is permitted as-of right, the 8-2, the same statute I mentioned before, says that certain uses can be regulated as, on a, essentially, a site-by-site basis. You've determined that the use is permissible in a zone, but you get to evaluate more general, generalized criteria, decide if it's appropriate at a particular location. So, using my analogy, you know, of a retail business, if you had a retail business permitted by special permit, then you wouldn't automatically have a right to it. You'd have to present the information required by the regulations and show that it's appropriately located at a particular place. Public hearings are required for public, for special permits. With site plans that I mentioned before, your regulations can require them if you want to, or allow them if you want to. But because it's an administrative review that tends to not involve the kind of discretion, you don't have to have a public hearing on a site plan that requires no special permit. In either a site plan or a special permit, if they involve activity that's regulated under the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Act, that, an application to that agency has to be filed either simultaneously or in advance of filing with this commission. And if it is a simultaneous one, the time for making a decision, which I'll touch on again later, ties into being able to make sure you have the wetlands decision and report before you actually make your decision. So, you also can be subject to an intervention petition under the Connecticut Inland, I mean, Connecticut Environmental Protection Act, 22A19. And it says that a person can intervene in any administrative or judicial proceeding, executive proceeding, if the proceeding is likely to have a potential for unreasonable harm to the environment. Now, what it does not do is turn a commission into a little environmental protection agency. You have to have jurisdiction in a particular regulation to consider the, an environmental matter. For example, if somebody wants to come in and say, "There's going to be air pollution caused." If you don't have any regulations that relate to air pollution, then you don't become, you know, mini DEEP or EPA to start evaluating air pollution. But if, on the other hand, you do have some criteria that relate to environmental concerns, a person can, can then submit information regarding those environmental concerns that are contained in your regulations. They have the burden to demonstrate whether or not there'd be an unreasonable impairment to an environmental resource. And that is one instance where, if you get a 22A19 petition, it probably makes sense to knock on the town attorney's door to make sure you're following the requirements of that act. So... So, here's what I mentioned before about the timing. If, with a wetlands regulation, if there's a wetlands application, your decision has to be withheld until you get a report from the commission and give it due consideration. Due consideration is tricky business, because if you don't really have a regulation yourself, you're bound by applying your own regulations, not the wetland regs. So, you, if you have a regulation that allowed for site design that would take into account wetlands, well, then you can give the wetlands advice due consideration. But if you don't have a regulation that pertains to whatever the issue is that was decided by the wetlands agency, then due consideration could be just putting it in your file and just proceeding and applying your regulations. So, we're good. So, there are some special requirements that are imposed in the, the general statutes related to zoning, and that's becoming increasingly the case in years. One is the Affordable Housing Appeals Act. And what that act requires is that 30% of the units have to be designated as affordable for a deed restricted 40 years, if the units are going to be sold. And in fact, if they're going to be rental units, the same thing. There'd be a deed restriction requiring that the, that the owner rent based on those same affordable criteria. 15% are at 60% mean income, the lower of either the region or the state, and 15% at 80%. And if a project is subsidized with state or federal funds and includes affordable housing, that can also be subject to 8-30G. And towns that are trying to achieve the 10% goal, if they can achieve that goal, you can apply for a moratorium to affordable housing. Now, what that act does is it, is it turns the burden upside down. Normally, your commission, an applicant who is denied has the burden of demonstrating that your commission acted illegally, arbitrarily, and abuse of its discretion. In an affordable housing case, you have to either prove that it meets an exception essentially, that it's industrial, it's zoned industrial where no residential uses are allowed. If you can demonstrate that, then that satisfies the burden to deny an affordable housing application. If it doesn't, then you have to have some kind of reason that outweighs the need for affordable housing, substantial public health and safety reason that outweighs the need for affordable housing. And that's a pretty steep hill to climb. If you've got, you know, legitimate issues in terms of public safety, where they can't, you know, meet fire code, it can't be safely accessed, can't, they don't have a safe access or egress, those kinds of things that are demonstrated with real evidence, then that can be a basis for denying affordable housing. But, again, the burdens would be on, on your commission, and it's very much a deck stacked against denial of affordable housing. Yes?
So, that means that they are required to provide the affordable housing if they're building a development?
No, no. What that means, a developer can come in and apply under the Affordable Housing Appeals Act. And by, if they come in with a project where they've set aside the necessary 30%, 15% at 80, 15% at 60, and they present all the documentation that's required by the state regulations, you'd have to have an affordability plan, for example, because a third party manages it and makes a report every year to demonstrate that they in fact haven't been sold to persons that don't qualify or haven't been rented. So, that's, that's applicant-driven. An applicant would be applying under that act. What can be done is, the state statutes allow the commission to include in its regulations requirements for affordable housing, if it wished to, but it doesn't have to. The next slide, it's encouraged. And so, the, the concept is inclusionary zoning, and you, the regulations can use that to provide for, if there's certain set-asides for affordable, that could be required. You can use it to create density bonuses that you would allow a larger or more dense developments than the regs would normally allow, provided the certain number of units are affordable. And it also could provide, provide for payments to a housing trust fund, if you have one. But those are all inclusionary zoning regulations that you could adopt, but you're not obligated to adopt. So, next section, or next slide? Thank you. All right, there are a couple, there's some federal law that sometimes can interplay with your, your regulations and your application of the regulations. One is the Americans with Disabilities Act and the Fair Housing Act. Persons who need to, you know, an accommodation, for example, they needed a ramp to get into their home because of ADA requirements, and your regulations wouldn't authorize that because you, you know, the ramp would have been constructed in a setback, for example. The person can ask for an accommodation, and it can be provided. There's no menu for exactly how that's provided. In some instances, that goes to ZBAs, and they, they decide to make an accommodation kind of along the lines of what you do with the variance. Other towns, the accommodation is provided by the zoning enforcement officer. The zoning enforcement officer establishes it, and sometimes in consultation with the commission, too. But someone wants to request something. This can come into play sometimes with, with group homes where, you know, there's a statutory requirement that as long as you have six or fewer, and it meets the statutory criteria, they have to be treated like a single-family residence. Well, under federal law, somebody could come in and say, "Well, I really need eight," or "I need nine," and demonstrate why it's a reasonable accommodations under the circumstances, maybe the size of the building, the number of bedrooms, parking, all those kinds of things. And under those circumstances, because treatment is being provided, you'd need to, you know, give an accommodation. Again, this is one of the ones you'd probably knock on the town attorney's door when somebody comes in with a request for an accommodation, as is the case with the next item, which is the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, which is one of the weirdest names statute I can think of. But initially, a legislation was passed by Congress that had real broad implications to just about all government in terms of religious uses. And the Supreme Court struck it down, saying that there wasn't an adequate record for, that that was, there was a need for that kind of scrutiny for all kinds of government. So, they narrowed it, and they did have a record of commissions, of land use commissions using discretionary standards to deny religious uses. And I also found that people operating prisons also would use their tools to bar people from exercising their religious practices. So, on yours, in your side of the world, if someone is proposing a religious land use, there is a provision in which you may need to provide them an accommodation. And if you don't, you could be subject to a suit under the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act and the civil rights, federal civil rights law, and could be, you know, exposed for attorney's fees and penalties and the like. So, if somebody ever knocked on the door with the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Acts, that's another instance where you should probably be knocking on our door. So, the next part of the presentation regards planning. So, planning is a different animal than, than zoning. And what you have the powers to do is, one, you can establish plans of conservation and development. That's your responsibility, and by state law, that's supposed to be updated, and, and that's designed to be a planning tool. It's not binding. There gets to be a lot of confusion, since you're wearing both hats, planning and zoning. There's this, this concept of a comprehensive plan, which should be evaluated when you change zoning regulations. Well, a comprehensive plan is really the regulations themselves. It's the scheme that you adopted when you acted like a legislature and adopted the regulations in the first place. A plan of conservation and development is a planning tool that you can use for guidance, and the statutes require you to look at, if you're going to make a zoning change, you're supposed to look at the plan of conservation and development and give it consideration, but you're not bound to follow it. If you, in your judgment as the zoning, wearing your zoning commission hat, think that you shouldn't make a particular change, even though it's called for in the plan of development, you're not bound to do that. Now, presumably, since you're the body that's created some of the recommendations of the plan of conservation and development, you're actually going to be agreeing with those recommendations, but, but you're not obligated to. All right, the next slide. Your review of municipal improvements, 8-24, another odd statute. That's one in which virtually any municipal, you know, acquisition or the conveyance of real estate, locating utilities, you know, providing public housing, locating public utilities, all of those, those municipal activities, they're, they're given this check with this, with you as the, in your planning commission capacity. Now, sometimes, you know, people get there, and it's a big project, a big giant school project or whatever, and, you know, a lot of controversy in the community of whether it's a good idea or it's a bad idea. Well, when it comes to you, you're just putting your planning hat on. You're going to think, think of your plan of conservation and development. Think of, it's not a question of, "Do you think it makes sense from the taxpayer, taxpayer standpoint?" That's a different question. That's, that's the people who are going to, you know, either in the budget, or in a bond, or whatever. It's just, your role is to evaluate whether it fits into the planning for the community. And if you think it doesn't, and you say, and you give it a negative referral, if that's something that is a decision that council would make, then they would have to do it with a supermajority vote. If it was something that went to a referendum or a town meeting, it wouldn't change the vote. But if it's, if it's a, a body of the, an agency of the town and not the total voters of the town, then you would require a supermajority if you give a thumbs down on an 8-24. So, next one. All right, so, your, your other duties in a planning commission is adopting subdivision regulations and applying them, and then approval of applications themselves. Now, a subdivision is defined in the statute as the division of a parcel that existed at the time of subdivision regulations were adopted into three or more building lots. So, that gives rise to what you hear people, you know, refer to as a free cut or a first cut. If you take a parcel that existed and you turn it, you get a building permit to create a second building lot, that is not subject to review of the planning commission. But as soon as you, you turn that into three, then it does. And after any application has been approved, if there's changes in it that require, change in the number of building lots, or changes in the public infrastructure or open space, then that would be a re-subdivision, and you'd have to have a public hearing before you could approve that. The concept being other people who have bought into the subdivision with an expectation based on the original subdivision plans, if they're going to be modified in that way, they should have an opportunity to weigh in with, with the commission. And conversely, just like I mentioned, site plans versus special permits, with a subdivision, there is no requirement for a public hearing with a standard subdivision, but you must with a, for a re-subdivision. All right, next slide. Oh, yes?
So, if you got, somebody comes with a free split, what's the rule of law about concerning meeting current regulations?
Well, they, that will come when the building permit is applied for. That should get marched down to the land use office, and they look at the plot plan and make sure it's adequately sized for acreage, frontage, all the setbacks, all of that. It's just not, doesn't have to come in front of the, this commission, either as a zoning commission or as a planning commission.
So, what if it's an existing structure?
If it's an existing, existing structure, if it's been there for more than three years, without a lawsuit having been filed, it becomes a non-conforming structure. And that's, that's-
So, but if you know about it as it happens?
Mm-hmm. Okay, so, somebody's developed, building something, and it's not-
It's an existing house, and they have a large parcel of land. They want to keep the land for the family, and they split off the house. So, now, they don't meet setbacks or separations?
Well, that's a problem. They can't create, they can't create the new building lot in a way that violates zoning.
So, what's the town's recourse in that case?
To not issue, you mean, so, what they've done is they, they've transferred the land and left themselves a building lot that's too small?
This one, no, this was a family farm, and it had a house on it. And the house, they split off three or four acres for the house, and then the rest of the land is a larger 100-acre parcel. But they ended up not meeting the setbacks, you know, around a couple of buildings, accessory buildings, driveways, wells, that kind of thing. Wells right on a property line. So, does the town, I mean, obviously, it's three years, so it doesn't matter, but-
Right.
If, I mean, you knew about it at the time, so what would the recourse be, or should if you're, is there a recourse?
You have to bring an enforcement action. That's what that statute did for the three-year window. A cease and desist or anything like that doesn't start the clock. You have to actually bring the lawsuit under 8-12 against them to, to get a court to order that they're in violation and to correct it, which presume, you know, presumably, you know, they could undo what they did, and then they would get the benefit of the, if they, if it was, they would work with, you know, the town, the commission and the town attorney if a suit had to be filed. But if it wasn't worth it because, under the circumstances, and you just didn't bring an action within three years, then it becomes legal.
So, then, does the town, how does the town staff or become involved in it in the first place if they don't really know about it?
Yeah, and that's, that's, someone would have had to notice. If the only thing that did it was the conveyance of real estate, then I think that's one that could slip by the cracks unless somebody, you know, somebody noticed that that conveyance was made resulting in a lot not being in compliance.
Could a policy be established to require first splits or free splits to go to the ZEO?
Yes.
Would it have to be a regulation, or could it be a policy?
Uh, no, it has to be a regulation, because the town clerk can't not accept the, the filing of it. And so, but, but if the, if the regulation's in place, then there could be a way that, that would, that would trigger notification that that's happened without getting the necessary permit that they should have, or sign off, I'll say, by the ZEO. So, that is something you'd have to adopt.
Okay, that's not a problem.
All right.
Thank you.
Sure. All right. All right, the next slide. All right, so, the... So, once there, if there are changes, if you have an approved subdivision, they're not required to comply with changes in the zoning regulations that were made after it was, was approved. And there's also, there's also deadlines for completing both site plans and subdivisions, but I'll just talk about it in the context of subdivisions. So, there's a, basically, the default is a five-year period with the potential for an extension of five. But at various times, that, that's been tweaked during COVID, it was tweaked during, you know, problem markets, they've changed that and given more time. So, you have to kind of, you, you have to look at the statute very carefully to see when the deadline would occur. But once you know where the deadline is, if, if that has gone by, you have the ability to determine that it has been an expired subdivision and can basically undo it on the land records. It doesn't happen automatically. So, there are some instances where a project is almost completed, and the deadline, the deadline's gone by, but there's just a tiny bit of work left. And so, rather than, you know, rather than bringing an action to determine that the subdivision is, you know, basically blows up, allow the final work to be done. So, there's a certain amount of discretion there. But if a project, you know, if it just hasn't, hasn't, you know, the developer went belly up, then there's a statutory process for, for recording notice that the subdivision has been, is terminated. Now, there's conditional and final subdivisions. So, the real tool for enforcement in, you've got a zoning enforcement officer, there is no planning enforcement officer. The real tool for enforcement in the subdivision world is to make sure that the public improvements are either constructed properly, or that there's funds available, that they will be constructed properly. So, that's in the form of financial guarantee. So, a conditional subdivision is one in which it should state on the plans, conditionally approved, not, shouldn't say "final subdivision," and that final subdivision endorsement from the chair or other authorized person shouldn't come until, A, all the public improvements have been done, and they've been, they've been recommended for acceptance, or B, that the developer has come in with a financial guarantee of an amount satisfactory to assure that the town could call, could call it and finish the improvements. What's important about that is, by statute, lots are not supposed to be sold until final subdivision is obtained. So, that would either mean you finished everything and you start selling lots. But if someone who wants, the developer wants to start selling lots as they complete the subdivision, the bonding has to be in place to protect that person who's bought on a road and presumes that that road is going to be ultimately a town road that's fully and properly improved. And so, that's the difference between the, between a conditional and a subdivision, or conditional and final. And the bonding is only related to public improvements. It's not related to, you know, the actual homes that get constructed or other, other improvements that are made on the lot. The difference- The different kinds of financial guarantees that you're required to accept are cash bonds, passbooks, savings accounts, letters of credit from a reputable financial guarantor. You do not have to accept surety bonds. And frankly, we would recommend not because they're mostly in the business of trying to find ways not to pay. So the other methods are, in our view, superior. Now, on the next slide, yes, thank you. The request for a bond release under, I guess not that new anymore, but when the financial guarantee requirements were adopted a few years ago, they also had a provision regarding release or reduction in bonds. So a person can request the release or reduction. And you either need to do that or you need to provide an explanation of what uncompleted work needed to be done before you're gonna release it. Maintenance bonds, those are, they can only be one, a one-year financial guarantee. There were a couple of towns that abused their power on that, which led to this, to this change and had almost a perpetual annuity. And so as a result of that, you can't have it for longer than a year and you can't mandate that it be imposed as a deed restriction or that a homeowners association be formed to make sure that, that public improvement is maintained. All right, the next section is enforcement. So the, I'll, I'll go through this pretty brief or pretty quickly because it's, it primarily deals with, well, you've got a ZEO makes an enforcement decision. That can be appealed to the ZBA. And then the ZBA decisions can be appealed to the superior court. In addition to that, on the next slide, the, also have the ability to go, when you're questioned before, you could go directly to court under Connecticut general statute eight dash twelve. You can bring an action directly in court. The court can issue an order to require compliance, can also issue, there are actual, there can be criminal penalties for zoning violations. That's a decision the states, there's a state's attorney that pays attention to housing and zoning and land use matters and they can actually issue, you know, a warrant for an arrest. But more commonly, they're enforced civilly and there's a, a set of civil penalties that a court can impose. And they can be daily and then they can also award attorney's fees if you're successful in the enforcement action. All right, the next part is the actual meetings and decisions by the commission. So the, you know, you've got experienced staff that understands the deadlines, but very briefly, there's a statutory date, statutory date of acceptance, which is the next regularly, regularly scheduled meeting or thirty-five days after it's filed, whichever comes sooner. And that triggers deadlines. The two most important deadlines to pay attention to are with site plans and subdivisions, re-subdivisions. Because those, if the, if you don't follow the deadlines, those can result in automatic approval. Other kinds of applications, like a special permit or a zone change, those, those do not result in automatic approval because the statutes have a specific provision in there in site plans that if the commission does not, you know, act on it within, it shall be considered approved. The same thing is true in the special, in the subdivision context. So you have to be, be careful that way. They can get extensions up to sixty-five days and they can be extensions to various different deadlines. If you're having a public hearing, there's a deadline on when you have to open the public hearing, close the public hearing and then decide. They can use portions of their sixty-five days on any one of those deadlines. And suggest that you always get the extensions in, in writing and so that it's clear that it's been agreed to by the, by the applicant. So, regular meetings and public hearings. So your agency is, the freedom of information requires the public to be able to watch what you do. But it doesn't allow any participation by the public that you don't want to give the public other than where public hearings are required. So the subdivision, re-subdivision, you have to give the public an opportunity to be heard. With a zone change, zoning district change, you have to give people the right to be heard. Other aspects of your, of your day-to-day business, like a subdivision, like a, a regular subdivision, like a site plan, like considering adopting your regulations through, you know, initially talking about it, doing your day-to-day business, that's not something the public has any right to be a part of. Now, a lot of commissions will have public comment as part of their agenda. I'm seeing that more and more common. I think twenty, twenty-five years ago, that was the exception to the rule. But now more and more, that's, you know, the case where people are given an opportunity to comment and things that are not otherwise on the agenda. But that's a privilege you're giving the public, not something that they have, have a right to. The, when you do have to have a public hearing, the typical order, and there is no rulebook on this. There's no, how exactly do you do it? The rulebook is it's gotta be fair. You gotta provide a fundamentally fair process. And both to the applicant and to members of the public who want to be heard. The general procedure is, you know, you hear from the applicant, commission asks questions of the applicant. Sometimes some commissions will, I say, do the public have questions for the applicant? That, that's, you know, also done. And then after that stage is done, then an opportunity for the, for public comment. And different agencies have different practices. Some will want people to, all in favor, all against, people who wanna speak that are neither fear nor again. Others are just in order of when they sign in. There's no, there's no rule for it. You can set time limits for the public to speak, but use common sense also. In the sense, an applicant comes in and they've got three consultants and they've got an hour and a half presentation. And you've got a neighborhood group right next door that hires their own set of consultants and they wanna be heard. If you told that applicant or that neighbor group that's, you know, probably hired a guy with a tie like this and, you know, has the three experts, that they only have three minutes after you gave the applicant an hour and a half, that'd be a problem. So you just have to use good judgment that way. If it's a controversial matter in which people, a lot of people are gonna be in the room and, you know, you can try to, the chair should try to encourage people not to have, that, that, it's not a popularity contest, it's about the regulations, it's about the issues that are before your commission. So people should try to avoid just to be repetitive. You know the public's interested in this, you're, the room is full, but please try not to just repeat with some, what other folks have said. You have the ability to, if someone is speaking about something that's not relevant, you have the ability and you should hold them, you know, they're members of the public. So you give some, some latitude to it. But there's also a lot of members of the public that wanna be heard on things that are relevant to your regulations. So if someone's talking about something that, you know, they're upset of something that, you know, someone did in town forty-five years ago on another property down the road, it's like, you know, thank you, Mr. Smith, but we have to just keep our comments related to the application that's before us. And you keep them online. And if you encourage people not to be repetitive, encourage people to understand that your role is simply to apply your regulations, interpret your regulations, considering to amend your regulations so that people aren't as surprised when someone starts talking about something that's completely unrelated where you rein them in and say, that's really not what this is about. The more dialogue that you can have that way, it often reduces a problem. Now, if you do have a big room full of people, you don't necess, and people, three minutes is short. The, the best practice is you want everyone to be able to speak. And then once everybody's done, if people who had more to say, that aren't gonna just repeat what they already said, you can give them more time. That's one way to deal with the fairness parcel on the one hand. On the other hand, when you got a packed room to be able to have everybody have an opportunity to be heard. Expert witnesses on certain technical matters. In wetlands context, it's long been held that wetlands, impact on wetlands is technically complex. So the commission, wetlands commission can't ignore an expert. Most things that planning and zoning commission aren't like that. But some of the cases on, on some traffic issues that are sophisticated things, if someone comes in with very specific information by an expert, you might be in trouble by just, you know, sort of ignoring it. So it'd be better to have evidence on the record of some sort that's tangible that would give you reason to decide not to follow the advice of experts. And of course, if there's dueling experts, you have the ability to decide which expert is more credible. And you do that. Now, you should encourage questions to come through the chair. And that's the best way to keep decorum. People shouldn't, definitely shouldn't be able to have, you know, a dialogue amongst themselves on an application and pointing over the room and pointing back. Everything is this body, your commission. That's why they're here, is to watch you do your business. And the information that is provided is for your, for your benefit, to, maybe it'll help you make your decisions. So by doing that, you encourage that. If someone asks to specifically cross-examine a person, and it's, it's not that common that it happens, there is a case that says you should, you should be allowing that. But again, it has to be relevant. It can't be, you know, it can't be, you know, language that's, you know, attacking and inappropriate. And if they, if persons are acting and you've told them it's irrelevant, please move on and they refuse to. Or, you know, you've told them the time is up and they refuse to. And you can have people removed from the meeting. I mean, that's an extreme, but I, I've seen it happen. And, and especially someone who's acting with really, you know, that, that calling, name-calling and getting people all fired up when that's not what this is about. If someone is really unruly, you do have the ability to, you know, cause you, you imagine walking into the general assembly or Congress and just starting yelling and saying things. That, that, they don't allow that because Congress has to get its work done. You're the same thing. You're, you're charged, you know, to accomplish the task of enforcing, applying your zoning regulations and you need to try to, to stay on task that way.
Excuse me?
Yes.
A second ago, you referred to questioning.
Mm-hmm.
Can you go over that again and say who could question who?
Well, if, if someone specifically asks, you almost only see a lawyer do this. And so if I have, I, I'm, I'm representing someone who's opposed to a project and their, their engineer has made a presentation. If I ask to be able to ask the engineer, cause sometimes it's, it's complicated to say, "Mr. Chairman, can you ask the engineer if he performed this test in accordance to, with the, you know, the stormwater management guidelines?" And then you say back to him, I'm sorry, I bumped this, and then back and forth. It gets kind of cumbersome. So if, if, you know, it only usually happens, again, with a lawyer. A lawyer says, "I'd like to, to question, directly question the, you know, the applicant's engineer." There's a case that says they should be allowed to, rather than go through the clunky process. It doesn't happen very often, though.
Vice versa?
What's that?
Vice versa, that can the applicant or somebody from the public question?
Directly question, yes. I mean, but you still, you run the meeting, so you, you have some discretion there. But as a, as a, as a general rule, if someone wants to be able to do that and they do it appropriately, they do it, you know, they stick with relevant questions. But, you know, it's very, it's very rare that that happens, though. Normally it's just presentation to you. Yes?
Light goes on. You're talking here about regular meetings and you're talking about public hearings. How would you classify a workshop?
Oh, it's a private meeting. That's, the workshop meeting is like doing any other business. The, again, the only time the public isn't, is entitled to be heard on something is on this, the special permit, the re-subdivisions, and changes in the regulations changing in district. So if you're having a workshop meeting on your policies and procedures, well, that's, your policies and procedures are a private thing about how you set, a lot of commissions don't have these, but I'm just, I'm making it up. If you had policy procedures of how you fill alternates or how you, you know, how you, who prepares the minutes and how you do that, that's the operations of your own, your own body. And nobody comments on that and never goes to a public hearing. Now, if what you're thinking about is regulation changes or the plan of conservation and development or something else, there can be a period of time in which you can kick things around and talk about it before the point in time comes that it's ready for primetime. When it's ready for primetime, the public is entitled to be heard. And that's what the public hearing's all about. So, but you have discretion too. If you're, you know, you're workshopping on, you know, considering adopting regulations related, you know, to timber harvests and you, or campgrounds and you have a couple of campgrounds in town, you might wanna have the owners and operators of the campground to come and present information to you that will help you draft the regulations so you're not just doing it blindly. But that's, you know, your prerogative. And if you wanna allow people to comment as you're doing the work, I would say it's unusual because it's kind of cumbersome if you're just kicking ideas around. If people are just gonna comment on ideas, that could really slow the process down. But it's, again, it's, it's your commission, it's your prerogative. There certainly is no right to it, but it's something that if you wish to do it, you could, you could do it. But until something becomes a public hearing, you know, the public gets to watch you do business just like you could turn C-SPAN on and watch Congress. But you don't get to, you know, go put up your hand and start talking. Congress has hearings, Congress has, you know, perhaps the same thing with the legislature. They have certain instances where people can be heard about pending bills. But in the interim, when they're talking about potential legislation and what they're gonna do, you can be in the room, but you, you can't, you know, make yourself part of the conversation unless they want you there.
So they don't allow, you don't have public comment at workshops?
I, it's unusual. I'm not, not really heard much, much of that because.
You know, it's like a regular meeting, you have five minutes before you let everybody have, if anybody wants to make comments.
You can.
But that's not.
No.
But you can or you can't?
Exactly. Oh, exactly, no, no. Because the, the, the time in which anything, you know, something's gonna be adopted, people have the right to be heard about that. And it might, it might make sense for you to hear from people early. You're thinking about doing this. I'd like, you know, if I would like to hear from the public on it. But to, to, at every instance in which you're considering ideas and kicking ideas around, that you have to hear from, it's kind of a waste of time because ultimately your body might decide, "That doesn't make any sense," and never put it out there. So if you need some guidance about what you think is a good idea or a bad idea, getting feedback from the community can be a great idea. But if it's in a way that bogs you down from figuring out what you wanna do and getting things ready to then present it, the statutes have a protection for the public. And that is the public hearing that's associated with, you can't adopt any regulation change. You can't change any district change without having a public hearing. That's the right that the public has to come in and tell you why this is a really dumb idea or this is the greatest idea you've ever come up with. That's when the public gets to do that.
So that's, that's regarding public. Now, what about counselors?
What about what?
Counselors' participation, town council.
Then we're like staff. So even like in a public hearing context, after a public hearing, you're allowed to ask the town engineer or the town attorney for advice. We can't give new information. We can't come and say, "Hey, look at this report that hasn't been submitted." But we can provide, oh, you're talking council with an IL or EL?
One of like.
Oh, the town council, I'm sorry. So that, that's a confusing word. Sometimes town, everybody refers to the town attorney as town council. So the town council is no different than, than the public, other than if your regulations provide. I mean, there's a liaison who's intended to communicate back. That's really what it's for, is, is communication. But it's like an, an ex officio member, a lot of towns, first electman or woman is entitled to sit in on all P and Z meetings. And, and as an ex officio member, they don't vote, but they have a right to be there. And they have, you know, a, a right as an ex officio member usually to be recognized by the chair and to talk. So if you have a person who is recognized in that capacity, then you can, you can and should hear from, from the person. But there's not, and if the regulations don't entitle them to comment, you're not obligated to do that. But obviously, if a council intends to have communication between it and other agencies, then that's something that makes sense to, to allow, allow communication. But, sure.
So, and what about when the counselor, town council?
Now, when you say council, you mean, if any member of the council wants to come in, they don't have any standing any different than any member of the public. If the liaison, someone who's, who's sitting here who's been designated and you have a policy where commissions have liaisons to the town council, then I think that's a little bit different. But if, you know, you use your prerogative, if a member, regular member of a council comes in and says, "I wanna be heard," you can use your judgment on whether that makes sense or not. That's your prerogative. Just like it's their prerogative and you're a member of the, you know, you're a member of the chair of the zoning commission. But if you show up at a council meeting, you know, they could recognize you and hear from you, but you, they're not required to hear from you.
So I've heard different things about, so such as, it was as, she's the rep, the council liaison. So can she get up and say, "I now wanna speak as a citizen"? How, how does that treat it? When they wanna get up and they speak and they have a big podium?
Actually, I was gonna, one of my, one of my slides, I was gonna touch that. It's a good, it's a good segue. It doesn't, I'm only partially gonna answer that question because I'm gonna talk about it more broadly. And applies to all you, which is when you're a member of a, of a council or a member of an agency or commission, you're one vote. All right, the body is the decision maker. And so unless you're authorized by your commission to take a position in public, if you're gonna, this commission wanted to, you know, you wanted to report to the ZBA that you weren't really happy about all the variances they're giving out, they might wanna reconsider it. If you, you know, adopted, you know, you decided that you were gonna allow Brian to go to a ZBA meeting and if they allow him to be heard, tell them that your commission is concerned with what's happening, then he'd be authorized to speak on behalf of your commission. But if not, people know Brian is a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. If he's getting up. is a member of Planning and Zoning Commission. If he's getting up at a wetlands commission or a ZBA or something, our recommendation is to indicate that you, that you're, you're speaking as an individual on your own behalf and not on behalf of the commission. So the same thing would true to be an individual councilperson. Unless the council has authorized the person to take a position on behalf of the council, then they're just one vote among many. And they, they shouldn't be, be speaking. And if they're going to speak as an individual, they would only do that if you're providing individuals opportunity to speak. So goes back to your earlier question. If you are opening the forum up for dialogue, and then, you know, you could allow that. But if you're not, then there, there really isn't a forum to do that. Just like a council on its agenda might not have any opportunities to hear from the chairman of the P&amp;Z because they've got other business and they don't, they don't hear from you. Or they might have an audience on their agendas that they allow for the public to comment on matters that aren't on the agenda. It's really the prerogative of, of the agency of how much latitude they want to give in terms of, of hearing from folks. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Now.
So the other section is virtual meetings and hybrid meetings. The, you know, the world of COVID brought some, you know, some advantages. There's some ability for people to participate in meetings and, you know, it might be people watching this tonight that couldn't be here tonight. The requirements that are in place post all the COVID thing that relate to meetings, if you have a full virtual meeting, members are supposed to be provided a 48, 48-hour notice and they're supposed to be on the website. Electronic access has to be provided to the public. If the only meeting, unlike a hybrid meeting like tonight, if you had a pure virtual meeting, if a member of the public doesn't have a computer, they contact Town Hall and you need to provide them access to, you know, a room with, with a computer. The same thing is, the Superior Courts do the same thing. There are people who are, the courts do a lot of things now virtually. But if you've been, you know, subject to a zoning enforcement action and you don't have a computer, the ability to do videos, the Superior Court has a room with a conference monitor and the person goes in. So the judge is on the screen and I'd be on the screen and this, you know, woman or gentleman from the public who doesn't have a computer is on a screen. You have to do that.
Okay. So how would that happen here in Town Hall?
How does?
Meaning that you're talking about like the Supreme Court or something?
No, no, I'm talking about towns. I'm talking about towns. But you don't, you're doing a hybrid meeting. Because you're doing a hybrid meeting, people have the ability to come here and sit. So you don't have to provide anybody a computer. They can come into this room and sit down. So hybrid is just, makes it convenient for members of the public or your commission to be able to participate without being in the room. But you're not obligated to give anybody a computer. But if you decided to, to close those doors and have the only access to your meetings by way of a video conference, then that's where you'd have to provide access to someone who says, I want to participate in the meeting, but I don't have a computer. I can't do that. And that's, and we've had a number of towns that have done that. They've opened Town Hall even during COVID. Opened Town Hall, set up a, a computer and then the person came in and was able to participate in the meeting from Town Hall. So the people in one room in Town Hall are holding the meeting and the person is in another room watching it on a video screen.
Thank you.
There has to be a roll call vote. So when some people, which kind of makes sense, when you're watching it in the room, you can get a better sense of who's saying I and they. But when you're on a computer screen, it's harder. So statutes require that you take the call by roll call. And the same thing is true for hybrid meetings. So hybrid meetings, there's supposed to be the 48-hour notice and roll call votes. Under FOI, notice for a special meeting only has to be 24 hours in advance and then you can have regularly scheduled meetings get set at the beginning of the year. So types of decisions, you can simply approve the application as it is. You can modify and approve it, which is, that's usually when there's something, it's almost there, but there's some specific thing that was missing. It's missing a compass rose, or it was missing the, you know, the engineer didn't, didn't put a block on there the proper way. Or maybe, you know, the slopes of a, of the grading were not in compliance with the regulations. They're off by a couple of degrees. You could say approved, subject to modification of the road grade from X to Y. That would be a modification. Conditional approval is when you add things where someone is, maybe has to provide a certain, you know, report or an opportunity for inspection, or you put a limitation on a special permit where somebody wanted to be open 24 hours a day. You, you, you have a condition that it only be operated from the hours of, of nine to five, whatever it is. Without prejudice approval, I used to disfavor doing that and just if you've, if you've denied and it's clear on the record why you denied, the person can reapply. I've had people try to argue, there's a concept called that impotent to reverse, that a commission to try to have some, some consistency in land use regulation or land use, that the commission shouldn't be able to just change its mind. It can in adopting regulations. That's, that's a different story. It can change its policy. But if an applicant comes in and application is denied, then that applicant should be able, as soon as a new bunch of commissioners come in, come in and file the same application and expect it to be approved. The commission's not supposed to change its mind without a substantial change. But if someone is, go ahead.
I mean, we're bound by the regulations. So if the person doesn't meet the regulations, that's it. Unless they want to change whatever it is and make it legal to be done.
Exactly. And that's, that's what that, that law is all about. So people don't come in. But sometimes it might be discretionary decision, a site plan, for example, or special permit, rather. Sometimes there's some discretionary decision. There might be, you know, not exactly a meeting of the minds. But once it's decided, that decision should stand. Now, here's the, without prejudice, if somebody missed something, if they, you know, they, they were supposed to get an engineer to design the, the stormwater system and they didn't. So they filed an application and you denied it. Somebody could try to use the, you didn't meet the regulation, that's it, to say that when they come back with an application that now has this, the engineer's stuff all properly done, that some neighbor would say, well, no, they took a crack at it. They didn't comply with the regulations. You denied it. You can't change your mind. That's why if the reason for the denial isn't because it failed to meet the regulations, but instead might have been some technical defect that the applicant could fix, you could deny it without prejudice to signal to them or to a future person that you can apply again. And if you fix that problem, we'll reconsider it. So that would really be the only purpose of saying, well, without prejudice, to make it clear the person could apply it again. It's not being denied on the, on the full merits. And obviously, you can deny it. The court cases say that you should have reasons for denial, but you don't, you don't have to. Some people think that if you don't, you're better because the court can make, will make up its reasons for denial. My perspective is, it's good planning to give people an understanding of why you're making your decisions and it's better to have your reasons for denial spelled out. Reconsideration, bottom line is you don't unless the only time is on the night of an application is decided. You realized you made a mistake. You miscalculated something. Somebody, and it should have been approved, you just did the math wrong. You could make a motion on that night of the meeting, if you were in the majority, to reopen the matter, reconsider it. And if it's put back on the table, the commission can decide it and, and change its decision. But once the meeting's over, and that's going to go to notice, it's too late. You can't, you can't change it. All right. Automatic approval, I already touched on, we can skip over that. We'll pop through a couple more. And, all right. So I've already touched on the fact that you should always, if you're going to stand up, you say that you're, whether you're representing the commission or you're representing yourself individually. But you can't represent someone else as a land use member. You can't represent somebody else in front of another land use commission. It's prohibited by statute. Next slide. So conflict of interest, ex parte evidence, bias. So most of these tests are, are common sense tests. Are we okay to go another 10 minutes or so? If I heard you, or are you good? Because I can, it's up to you.
You're the attorney, you tell me.
I can tell you, the only thing we have to do is accept an application and approve minutes.
Then, then it's your prerogative.
No, go ahead.
He's exercising his prerogative.
Exactly. And so the, so bias and predetermination. So conflict of interest, you can have a personal interest or a financial interest in an application. If you have either of those, or it appears that you have one of those. You may think, you know, that your, your best friend from grade school, you would be harder on her than anyone else in the earth. And you know you'll be totally fair, if not tougher on that person. Everybody in town knows that's your best friend from, from grade school. They're not going to believe that you're going to be unbiased. You need to, even if you're truly in your heart of hearts know that you'd be fair, you have to, you have to step down if it, if it appear that you have a conflict. Bias is, if you start, be careful in your language on applications. I mean, one example that we give is someone is in a wetland training, but someone said that, you know, I'll, I'll say the, the Willimantic, you know, river watershed is a, is a great trout resource. I'm not going to approve any application that's within a quarter mile of, of that. Alternatively, now that suggests bias. You've made up your mind, you're not going to approve something. If you, on the other hand, said that the resource is really important to me and you're going to have to demonstrate that you've complied with the regulations in order to protect that important resource. That's not biased. That's honest. We all have opinions. That's okay. Just so be careful with your language so that if someone, you saw it written down on paper, somebody wouldn't be able to say, see, he or she made up his mind before this public hearing took place. So again, a lot of this stuff's common sense. And...
Can you go back to the extracurricular?
Sure. What that, what that refers to is occasionally a commission will get, you got a public hearing where everybody's presenting information, applicant's presenting, other presentation. If you're going to do a lot of your own homework and come into meetings almost as if you're an advocate. Now, if you're aware of something and you said, ask the part, you know, commission or the applicant to comment on it, that's one thing. But if you're going to the library and you're studying issues that relate to the application, that can suggest that rather than be more of a judge and decider and the information being presented, that you're, you're so actively participating that you probably have a bias one way or the other. So again, it's a common sense thing. If you have knowledge about something, that doesn't mean you shouldn't put it on the table. But there's a point in time where you've gone too far, when rather than being a neutral decision maker, you're, you're being almost an active participant in the application. That'd be the extracurricular stuff. Now, when you do know stuff, we, we have some specialized knowledge, you have training in something, put that on the record. All right. So you can say if that, so that if you are talking about it after the, you know, the applicant could have the ability to question you. And if you, you know, are going to weigh in on something based on your own technical experience, technical, not just, you know, experience in, in real estate or zoning or et cetera, but something like, you know, if you were going to bring some engineering analysis or some other kind of analysis to the table, you should let the applicant and the public know so that they have an opportunity to, to inquire of you so that you're not, you're not going to make it an unfair process. Familiarity of record, I mean, you have the ability to review, now you use a review videos, but audio is fine, even minutes have been found to be sufficient. But you should state on the record that you've had an opportunity to review the information if you weren't at a prior meeting and now are going to participate. It's good to have that on the record to say that you have had an opportunity to review that. Now, if you are, did you have a question?
So in terms of bias, I've been advised once before, and maybe, I want to see if it's right or wrong. If a commission member thinks there, maybe there's an implied bias, but they want to state on the record that they can hear the application and they don't have, they're not going to act on it with a bias. And then they offer that to the applicant, whether or not that they should still sit on, on the application. If the applicant agrees that they sit on it, they can't then appeal because of potential bias.
That's true.
Okay.
That's true. Essentially, if an applicant agrees to almost anything, it's the same thing even if you put conditions or that maybe are beyond what you could require. If the applicant says, okay, that works, and, and then you approve it, they can't pull the rug out from under you if they've agreed to you. So that works. But even, you know, to that point, you are all obligated to make your own decision about whether or not you're biased or unbiased. The commission can't make, the commission as a whole can't make you recuse yourself, even though if it's a screaming obvious conflict and maybe you're going to pay for it with an appeal down the road, it's all your individual judgment, which you, which you exercise well. So I'm not suggesting that you wouldn't. But that's something that you need. And if someone is questioning you and you think, if you think that they're, they're questioning you, but you know that you're, you don't have a bias, you can actually ask the applicant, but the problem, that question could be if the applicant says, I have no, I do have a problem, you got to be comfortable stepping down. But if you are sure that you're able to hear it, or you don't have a bias, and you don't want to put it in the hands of, of the applicant, you also can state on the record why you believe that you are able to fairly sit. And courts will look at that and say, hmm, this commissioner paid attention to that, really thought about it and, and made that decision. And will usually give deference to that kind of a decision-making. I mean, if it's an obvious conflict and you say it's not, that's not going to help you. But if it's, you know, if it's a close call and, and you show that you've, you've carefully considered it and have decided that you're not biased, courts have been deferential to that. All right, let's pop to the next slide. We've already talked about this, which is the, you know, at least one of them, appearing and participating in hearings. You can, you can represent your own interests, being a member of the commission. You're obviously going to recuse yourself if you're opposed to your next door neighbor's application. You're not going to participate in, in any way. But if the public hearing comes, you have an opportunity to speak on your behalf in favor of your own personal property interests. Now, normally, if someone is going to, to recuse themselves because they have some kind of a conflict, it is a good idea to leave the room and not to be there. There's actually been cases where people have been sitting and staring and, and this argument that they, that they were influencing the commission by being there. So the safest bet, if you've got a conflict, we've got modern communications with emails and texts and the like, you know, you go sit in a conference room downstairs and then once that, that matter has been passed, you get contacted, you come back and you sit down again. That's the safest bet if you do have a, a conflict. And it's also a good idea, and I think I'm pretty much done. It's, it's a good idea if you do or are going to recuse yourself is to say why, not make it a mystery. And so again, that kind of, you know, transparency of the reasons for you not, you know, you're not voting, rather than have it be somewhat of a mystery, just say it out there. You know, saying that you have one is showing that you do, you're, you're taking your job seriously and you made a decision that you shouldn't act in that particular matter. And that's something you should be proud of and not, not concerned with. So I think that, why don't I open it up just for a couple minutes? Are there any topics that, because I think these other slides are ones that you're pretty, be pretty adept at. Any, any issues that you want me to, to kind of speak on?
I just want to go back to the affordable housing because that's what started this whole ball rolling. A Section 8-30G application. If we've met our 10% affordable housing, can they come in with an 8-30G?
There has to be, you have to apply and get a moratorium. But, but if you qualify, if you got the 10%, you can qualify for the moratorium. And if you do that, then, then no, that they do not get the benefit of 8-30G at all.
So even if we get the, even if we've got over 10%, we still have to apply? What do we apply?
There's a more, there's a moratorium you apply, that you apply for. You make sure that you're, you might already be on it. There might be a list of towns that are already met it.
We just went under 10%, so...
You just went under?
9.48.
So, so they, they keep, they keep track of where you, where you're at. So the Department of Economic Development has, has lists. So normally, when people ring that bell, they, they'll, they'll apply to be recognized as having the 10%.
Okay. Now, the inclusionary zoning. That you said that it allows regs, so there's a state statute on that?
Yes.
It allows regs to set aside units as affordable. It allows the use of density bonuses. And then making a payments to a housing trust fund. Do we have to give the density bonuses? And do we have to have them make a payment to the housing trust fund?
No, you don't have to have a set aside either. None of those things are required. It's just, it's, it's authorized by, by the statutes to do that. So you could in your regulations...
Authorized, but not, but not mandated?
Not mandated. No, correct.
All right. I just wanted to verify that.
But that's another way to get towards, you know, the 10% is you, you can have, you know, you can, you can provide bonuses to people if they want, if they include it. Or you could include, you know, you could mandate that every development of X size must have X affordable units. That's something you're, you're authorized to do but not required to do.
So I, I think I saw it, I want to say it might have been Ridgefield had it where they mandated affordable units because they're well under the 10%. So they mandated, but they had an opt-out and it was a payment. And it was in triple of the median income. And then it would go into a housing trust.
Right.
So median income in the hundreds of thousands in that town. So the, the penalty was about like, or the option to opt-out was about $300,000 or $400,000 to the housing fund.
Yep.
And that would be totally acceptable.
That's third bullet point. You have the ability to have somebody opt out of it by making, by making a payment. To your right, you know, if you have a housing trust like that, it's so, because that money then would be used for affordable housing is the, is the concept. is the concept.
Any else?
The housing trust fund, is that run by the town? Would that have to be run by the town?
I think they usually, the ones I'm aware of are, I don't know if they have to be, but the ones I'm aware of, I could, if that's something that you were interested in doing, I could, I could confirm that one way or the other.
Could a housing authority, like our housing authority qualify as that?
Maybe.
Yeah.
But I would have to, I could have to confirm that.
Okay.
I got a question, different. So if we're doing regulations, let's just say we're going to change industrial regulations, commercial regulations, or we're going to change a property or consider changing a property from commercial to residential, or something to do with commercial and industrial.
Mm-hmm.
Would, wouldn't the, we benefit as a commission by a discussion from Economic Development Commission participation or not?
Probably yes. I mean, it, your question is, I can see circumstances where something, you know, there's a minor project where it really doesn't develop that. But if you're looking at making some comprehensive changes in the regulations that relate to commercial or industrial uses, then yeah, that's exactly a time that might make sense.
If it pertains to something other than a particular application by a private entity, and it's town-wide, we're dealing with something that's on a towns basis.
Yeah, but long ago, we had Elsie Bisset come to our meetings, and she was the Economic Development Director. So.
Well, we're being told we can't do that. That's why I'm saying that.
That you can't do that?
You've got, you've got Jill here as our economic development.
Well, we, we have collaborated in the past with the Economic Development Commission. We've made significant changes in town, at a town-wide, where we changed the whole area to commercial, on a commercial, and we just worked together on it, on, at a workshop level.
Right.
And we're being discouraged, I mean, by staff about this.
I think there, I think there was confusion. I think there was, when it was an individual applicant versus a text, like a zoning change. So for example, we did have members of our Economic Development Commission here when we went over the business park regulations. However, if there was a particular site, that's not the purview so much of our commission. We're more visionary versus regulatory. We don't have regulatory teeth. So making that distinction between the two lines, I think it was very fluid in the past. And.
What you just described is very, very well described, is the difference of time when it's more appropriate than others.
And so we had, under consult with Rich Roberts, he gave us that distinction.
Well, no wonder it sounded so good.
I coached him.
So, such as a business park, when we, we did the regulations, but that was an application by the property owners, right? That was, that was ours?
That started as an application of the property owners, and it became one from, then you did a second one yourself.
We did it ourselves.
Yes. And that's when it was.
Does that make a difference as far as participation?
Well, again, I've used the word a lot, words a lot, but, but common sense is, there might be instances in which you're doing a workshop, I gave an example of campgrounds, you know, where you want to have the actual owners of campgrounds come in and talk to you because it'll help you. So if there's, you know, an application that, that maybe it's even a private application, but it's huge, maybe, you know, there's an instance in which you blur the line a little bit, and you hear from economic development because of it's how significant it is. But by and large, the distinction that, that Jill, if you don't mind me calling you Jill, or Ms. St. Clair, mentioned is a good one, which is when you're dealing with a regulatory change, something that's a policy type change, then that's the time where having them at the table makes more sense as you work things through, and not so much when there's a specific application. Although, you know, economic development, sometimes when there's a specific application, they'll have a representative that appears at a public hearing, and that might not be the way your, your agency works, but will sometimes say, this is a good thing for the town. And they make, you know, they suggest it's a good idea to approve it, and it is a specific application. But that would be its prerogative, and it would authorize someone to, to write or speak on behalf of the commission on a particular applicant. Whereas being at the table makes more sense when you're actually thinking and kicking around policies, if it's valuable to hear from that person, just like it might be.
Like a workshop level for something.
Right, right. It's like, well, you can invite someone, if you're doing a particular kind of workshop on a particular night, people who have meaningful input to help you decide what direction you want to take. But then, once you've made the decision of how it's going to take, that's when you'd be opening up everything to the, to the full public because you'll have a public hearing, and everyone will have a full opportunity to comment on what you guys, what you decided should be adopted, and they could tell you why not, and they might persuade you.
I appreciate it. Any questions from anybody?
All right. And I think maybe you probably got one point, maybe one point two five credits. Thanks, everybody.
No, thank you. A five-minute break for everybody before we go. I want a, I want a five-minute break.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, become a motion by somebody for a five-minute break.
To adjourn.
Oh, to adjourn this committee, yeah. Sorry. Problemized. Keep me up to speed. You have a second?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Okay. Five minutes.